...the athletic user fees forty dollars. I know we tried to do this a few years back. I know Merrill tried to do it and ended up doing it and then coming back. You know, we just got the report saying you have parents doing the boosters. Why do we keep going after parents to pay more money? I mean, if you're talking about the number of athletes, we're not talking about a lot of money by raising it at fifteen dollars. It's not bringing a lot more money. Why do we keep going after the same people who continually pay and pay and pay?
Or can someone just address why we need to raise that?
Sure, because the amount of coaches and the advisors and the busing costs and, you know, our costs continue to go up and we continue to have more participation, so.
So what are we talking, ten thousand or so dollars that we're gonna bring in by raising that?
A thousand.
Fifteen times, yeah, fifteen thousand, fifteen times a thousand.
Yeah, and I just.
I had asked, and I did not see in Mr. Ziegler's report, and I've sent some email to him. I had asked for a cost per student, per sport of our athletic department. Again, asking for that information. That will tell us a lot about what it costs per sport and why these costs mainly go up. What was the cost to play baseball per student, male team? What was the cost to play football per student? What was the cost to play hockey?
Right, so that's honestly, that's very difficult to, you know, I could bring it for a year, but baseball, I might have thirty students, thirty athletes this year. Next year I might have forty-five, year before I might have twenty, but I.
We've got a snapshot for last year. We've got all that from last year. Sabotage of the last year. We don't have the complete, you know, cost for the sport, because the sport's going on right now. You can give us current year for some sports.
Right, so we don't, we don't break it down like that. So I don't have, like, I can't run a report that says, um, we have all of our coaches paid out of one fund. So I know how much our coaches cost total, but I don't have the coaches broke down by sport. I don't, I don't keep that in my calendar system.
So you know how, you know how much payroll costs for the baseball coaches? You know how much it costs for uniform supplies for baseball? You know how much busing, all that kind of, you mean?
I have a busing budget, but I don't break it down to soccer takes three trips.
Does our busing company tell us what it costs, or are we just paying them a total amount per season, per year?
No, I mean, it's per trip. I just don't run it that way. Do you know what I mean? I just run.
Believe me, I understand that you don't run it that way.
Yeah.
But we have, we're gonna find out what a good cost is for a student, we'd have to break it out that way. So tell me, tell me you can't do it, or do.
I'm gonna tell you that it'd take a lot of time to do that, or less than three percent.
I asked two months ago.
Okay. Per.
I appreciate, I understand, it's three percent of the budget. Get it? I'm not attacking athletics in any way. However, if we're gonna make specific decisions about different departments and different things, we really need to look at what that number is. And may, that may surprise us in different ways. It may reinforce, oh geez, it's really cheap compared to running the, I don't know, compared to English department, you know? I don't know what that, what that is, but.
Well, yeah, it's less than three percent of our whole budget, so I'll tell you, it's pretty cheap.
Fine.
Yeah, but, but what is, out of that three percent, how much does softball cost? How much does basketball cost?
Do you have to do softball unless you're playing hockey? Can you break it down per player?
You know what the coach salaries are? You know how many coaches you're staffing for each sport, so it's a spreadsheet. You do a sort on it, you can sort, I think you could sort them pretty quick. If you just use a round number, terms of busing, I know you're going various locations. I don't think Cory's looking for perfection here.
Yeah.
He's just looking for diagnostic type information.
Brent, do you have any questions on that?
I, I know when we get into insurance cost, you're gonna, you're gonna, per student athlete, I don't know.
It's just what?
It's just quite a bit of time, like you said, but if that's what the board would like, we will do it.
Insurance cost, okay, here's what it costs per student athlete insurance, because how many athletes we have, divide the number. Could you do payments more for football versus?
Can I ask one question? Are we gonna blend, like, when we say baseball, are we blending? Is this for high school or am I looking at middle school and, like, if it's baseball, just high school, Cory?
Oh, high school.
All right, all right. Dick, is that what further, you know, because of baseball, but different levels of football?
Can you bring that back to me?
Question too, Anna, every advisor or coach that are paid out of all of the scales, are every one of those organizations paying the fee?
Yes, every athlete pays a fee.
Not athlete, I'm talking about any advisor in any of what we are paying on the compensation scale, A through G, whatever it may be, are all those students slash athletes slash are paying fees to be in that organization? So that's another problem that I have, making the athletes pay more.
Pay more, then you're talking for some clubs, like for, like being in a play, you don't have to pay.
So let's have them maybe start paying fees instead of just.
Like choir?
Exactly.
I can add to, so let's say choir's going somewhere, they're gonna pay for the bus. The students will pay for the bus, so that's kind of the fee that they're going to.
Right, but there's, you're still paying an advisor out of this fund. So maybe we make it up there instead of charging. You know, I just, you know, you gave a report that the parents are supporting these booster club. You know, and I'm gonna tell you, you're gonna have some feedback from these parents that are gonna pay the additional fee. So if we've got people that aren't paying fees, maybe we look at that.
I think for a senate, for example, if they go to the state conference and then they get to go to nationals, the kids and the parents are gonna pay for that, so that's a lot of money that they're already paying. So they don't have a fee, but they're gonna pay for those opportunities. I don't know if we wanna give them a fee on top of that, 'cause then it's just gonna be a lot.
But it's something to look into, instead of always going after that significant, seeing today, who's passing.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great point. The only, the only thing that I see is if, if they're allocated, let's say, a supply budget, then there's essentially a fee. If we're not allocated any assistance from, let's say, a one-ten budget, then essentially there's not a direct fee associated. That's just kind of been a general line, but whether that's good or bad, I don't know.
We do have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. New business item 10C, discussion and possible decision. Update on compensation committee meeting quarter three and approval of one swim coach to be added to miscellaneous compensation. Appendix G for the eighteen-nineteen school year.
So our committee met for our quarter three. We went through a, a number of items on our agenda for our compensation committee. We take a look at all of our professional development, we take a look at what our movement. We hit our April first deadline, so that means that our staff have had to meet their points by April first. So we took a look at who did and who did not. And then as part of our miscellaneous compensation G came the recommendation that you heard in the public forum about adding a swim coach to our appendix G. Clearly my fingers aren't working. So the recommendation from the compensation committee is to add a swim coach to begin a swim team that would operate as a club sport for the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year. And the committee is recommending that that be added to our miscellaneous appendix G.
Anna, are we, are we able to state unequivocally that our pool can be used to host a swimming?
Abby?
Abby.
Abby, yes.
Abby did confirm that, and when it addressed the rumors, she laughed, so.
Yes.
The measurements have taken place.
Yes, yeah, that was, yes, yes. So we can, yes.
What, what, appendix G wasn't about this?
This is appendix G. It was where the softball is. Class B, I'm sorry, class B right there. It's where our high school had to go. Just in the coordination of the program, and we looked at the amount of hours, the committee looked at the amount of hours of culture that we put into it, the development of the program, the fact that it's a WIAA sport. There were a number of factors that the committee, Paul, you're a part of that committee, share a number of things that we looked at as we.
We looked at number of athletes, they thought, hours, travel, and a lot of these meets are on weekends. This is a big Saturday type event, so that, all that took, came into play.
This would be a male and female team?
Co-ed, yes.
Co-ed team?
Just to figure what that do.
Would we compete against, I noticed Lakeland, Eagle River.
The GNC has a lot of swim teams.
They do, so we would compete as a GNC school against GNC teams?
Zach, was it co-ed?
Yeah, I'm trying to recall the, what the formal determination was. We basically, you know, meeting with Abby, who is a pool director, and she had been in the club and developed programs from start to finish. She said there's gonna be an initial fall rollout that's gonna be, it's gonna be more easy to get a girls' program going initially, and then boys would follow in winter. So she had kind of, we had kind of mapped out a, kind of a timeline to gain, get a gauge on where we're at with numbers, where we're at with implementation, and what, what that would look like. So it was a high school, middle school combined program. And I think, Anna, did you say we, we left the meeting with a determination of a recommendation for one contract?
Yes.
Okay, so one contract. So essentially, that would be primarily for starting with the fall with girls, and then boys would tie into it, so.
So they would coach two seasons under that one contract? Because you mentioned fall, fall with the girls, winter would be boys?
Winter would be boys, and based off of Abby's recommendation, she stated that we should, we should start with rolling out the, the girls. But then we cannot, we could open it up and allow that to be high school, middle school, and then even potential boys if there was interest in that.
So then would there be a second coach, coaching request? If boys were interested? And what about Title IX requirements? Are you gonna be out of balance, boys' sports, girls' sports, or because it's a club sport, you don't?
Yeah, it's, it's, we have the clearance, if it, if it has the interest, we have the proper clearance already for it to be a WIAA sport. But if it doesn't have the, the traction or the right criteria, it certainly can, the, the prior tier for scaffold would be just to implement as club and work through the Kings. But, but if we get the interest and it's generated and we got the momentum, then it could be functioned as WIAA. And our conference currently has a bye, so we would fit perfectly into our conference schedule. That's something that they, they encourage us to do if possible. They're looking for us to, to join, so, but the recommendation was first, let, first and foremost, let's focus on getting, seeing if we can get the girls established and, and the boys gathering that, that interest and then developing from there, so.
How about viability of numbers? I mean, you know, quite honestly, we're looking in a position that a little bit more than a club, when you, when you prove it in this fashion at WIAA. Usually the path is the club sport for year two, and then you have, you make application, apply for WIAA status. That is the typical route. So why, you know, we have no viability of numbers here. It's really tough to approve potential compensation model and/or position for something that's needing a little bit more substance.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's a great question, and I think, you know, that was one of the reasons why I asked Abby, but she must have believed, which is fine. But her, her component was that this, this dynamic is different because you, you almost have to make the commitment to, to draw that coach out. We do have highly qualified swim coaches in the building that have expressed interest to lead and develop a swim program. But what's different about this is, is one, it's, it's, certain clubs are not recognized as WIAA, even no matter how many students you have in that club, whereas swim is established as a WIAA sport. So her recommendation was, you have to, you have to make that commitment, draw that coach out, put the framework in place, and then that'll draw up the numbers. Because she said, right now, the trend we're seeing in swim is we've got a ton of interest, we've got a lot of kids that are highly motivated, but once they, once they are a few years in, they don't see any path, and they get snatched up by some other sport. And she said, so we have the kids that wanna do it, but they don't see any path forward, and they end up deferring somewhere else. So her, she strongly recommended, from her experience, to go ahead.
I think that's what the committee heard, don't you, Paul? I mean, I don't think, you've said no, your committee, you and Don, that compensation committee has not said yes to everything that's come forward.
No.
No, not at all. So when you looked at all of that and the possibility of.
I just based it off, some of the kids I've talked to, I have a lot of middle school kids that are big into swim. They are over replaced, so all of a sudden they go, huh, if I don't switch schools, I'm not doing this in high school. I'll have to get into a different sport. So eventually, by the time they get to eighth grade, they start quitting, where there's an interest.
So why would we look to co-op first? And go to, go to a school that's already got an existing one, so we can see and split some of the costs, like we did with girls' hockey? Why would we wanna take something on like this at work that's so unforeseen right now? And what's the initial cost?
It's, it's a twenty-nine-hundred dollar cost. It's two thousand, you know, nine hundred dollars commitment. And, and based upon our students, we believe that we do have the interest. We would co-op if we only had a few kids. So we co-opt, in hockey, we have three girls?
Yeah.
Three girls, and, and that's why we co-op hockey. We co-op in gymnastics because we only had, you know, for many years, because we only had a couple of kids. So this is because we know that they brought forward the numbers and the interest, and there were twenty to thirty kids that were interested in it. So that's why we wouldn't co-op. That's why we wanted, that's why the committee heard this and listened to all of the information and data in our bringing forward the recommendations.
We, we directed Zach to develop programs to get every one of our kids, whether it's attainable or not, I don't know, 'cause athletic coach gets in the way sometimes, but we directed him to have something for every kid in our school to do. Whether, it doesn't have to be athletics, it needs to be an activity, because we see the positive for it. And this is another example of that. I, I believe there's plenty of interest, and we have a pool. So I'm very supportive of it, and I would make a motion that we approve 10C, the update on the compensation committee meeting to include adding a miscellaneous compensation for the swim coach.
So we have a motion by Barnes, seconded by DeWiss, to approve item 10C. Further discussion from the board?
So what I'm hearing said then, with that, now are we talking middle school or just high school? We have enough to form a team. And what I'm counting here is that we have seven schools that already have swim teams.
Yes, so, yeah, so we would, we would fit in, in fill the, what's currently a conference bye. That would be the, that'd be the vision. And then the, like, let's say, for example, Rhinelander is a high school, middle school combined. They, they practice together, and the vision would be the same. The goal would be to get as many kids as possible instruction.
So what I'm hearing then, it would be just, you'd be competing just as high school? Or do these middle school compete also?
Nope, the, the middle.
Their age brackets?
Yeah, and, and the great thing is the middle school or the high school schedule would be determined by our conference with additional opportunities, just like with other sports, to add non-conference events. But then the middle school schedule would be more individually picked, so we, there's complete versatility. We could pick five, ten, whatever we wanted to do. So depending on our numbers and our interest and our availability, we can fully customize the middle school schedules.
So this, because it doesn't specifically state high school, it's approval of one swim coach. It could be expanded, knowing we currently have kids in the district that swim for the YMCA team in Lawson. They practice at Lawson.
So we still go through the process of actually creating a position then, right? This is just nothing but putting it in the, in the tier.
I have not seen anything about insurance on this proposal. Is there any extra insurance?
Anything further from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eleven is a curriculum and standards committee meeting report.
Good evening, everyone, nice to see you. We had a, kind of a reflection agenda for the evening in, in April, where we took a look at our universal screening process, where we're at. You may see a recommendation come forth at the June board meeting in terms of a, a universal screener to be used for K-12 students. That was something that we've been talking about in the curriculum and standards agenda meetings the last couple of months. But the vetting process has begun, and basically a universal screening assessment is something given three times a year as a snapshot in, generally speaking, the areas of reading and math to help you create pathways for kids. Intervention all the way up through enrichment. And we currently have several different ones that we are using. So the purpose of going to one would be common understanding, common language, looking at trend data over time that is consistent and can be tracked with particular students over time, and a more consistent and efficient manner. So we had an update on the universal screening tool, which we will again update in May. We come together May twenty-first as a whole team again to get feedback from the pilot teachers who are using the top recommended program, which is from Fastbridge. We're also piloting a secondary program, a star, that comes to us from the Renaissance Company. So that was kind of the main new agenda item for us. And you can link into that, another document there that just shows, we did some reflection and celebration activities, looking at all of the policy, vision, accountability, and community leadership agenda items we've talked about throughout the year. And the purpose of this activity was really to celebrate what the committee felt really good about and policies and structures within our committee that were going well. And then also to look at challenges, things we'd like to do differently next year, or things we'd like to know more about. How can we best engage the committee and the committee members in conversations around initiatives that are generally driven from student data outcomes and staff? So the, the results are there, it was great discussion. We really appreciated the feedback from the team and hope to in May put forth some of those challenges and things we'd like to learn more about into actionable steps for next year.
Thanks. Looking at, thinking about back to the student board presentation on China. Most community members don't know that took place. Thinking about Mr. Kramer's comments earlier tonight on what took place at the middle school, I always go back to the Mosne times, 'cause I, I take it every week. And I think a lot of community members do, maybe it's just a school corner or something, once a month where we focus on some of that, so that the community begins to understand, you know, what's really taking place in the schools.
Yeah, and the extended field trips, we talked about that, you know, it's a great point.
Yeah, I saw that in kind of the challenges, or.
That, you know, making that more aware of all the great opportunities and experiences that, you know, truly are driven by policy, that we approve those, but then the great learning effect that comes out of that. So that's a great point. We talked about that, too.
I noticed that in the notes, that's why.
Good job, thank you. I get a gold star for that.
By the way, I'm the gold star. Thank you.
You are now the community member on the curriculum and standards. Good job, you're in charge of pictures.
All right, let's move on. Item B is discussion and possible decision, second reading, revision of graduation policy, fifty-four sixty-two, and financial literacy credit.
This is your second reading. Mike, you had a good comment about what about our kids who graduate at semester? And although the black, the black lettering is our current policy, and the red is just what we're changing, we do have an early graduation policy where we cover that. Okay, so thanks for bringing that up. So I didn't hear from anybody else, and this did go through on, as a first reading, so we would just need approval on the second reading, unless somebody else that changes.
Motion by Kaiser, seconded by DeWiss, for the second reading for the revision of the graduation policy, fifty-four sixty-two, and financial literacy credit. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number twelve is the building committee meeting report.
Building committee met earlier this evening. We first heard the update on the energy efficiency projects, centering on the work being done to the high school gym, the roof being replaced, also the removal of asbestos in the boiler room, and duct work also moved in. We also heard about the science addition, fence room addition project, what work is being done on that. Five of the six invited contractors showed up for the walkthrough. Also discussed the ongoing facility issues. Lo and behold, we have plumbing that's failing and toilets that are falling off the walls. Not new to anybody that's been around the par schools for some period of time. And the schedule of the gym floor replacement was also shared. Brief report on the Mosne Athletic Complex was set. There was a meeting had taken place at our last board meeting. Guard will not be participating this year. We have other avenues that we can move forward and keep that process going forward. That's all I have to say.
Any questions on the board? Personnel committee meeting took place as well at six-thirty, took action on a number of items. I'll consolidate some. Item number K is the decision that committee made to approve the special education gap into the eighteen-nineteen school year. The staffing was a reduction, knowing that this could be a target that changes depending on students enrolled in the school. So we're gonna have them approve that, and I think the motion, we approve as a whole board as well. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Items B, C, D, and E, were new hires. Forward with approving an occupational therapist hire, a middle school reading teacher hire, a high school physical education teacher hire, and a high school learning disability teacher hire. Committee moved forward with authorizing the hiring of all those. Therefore, I'd make a motion that we as a board do the same. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries as well. Items F and G were the acceptance of an elementary reading teacher resignation and the acceptance of a middle school teacher resignation. The committee made the decision to accept both of those resignations, so I would make the motion we accept those resignations as a full board as well. So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries as well. There were no approval, there was no approval necessary of additional resignations. We tell you these are hires, there were not any, and there was not an update on we told you were hires, because there were not any as well. That concludes personnel committee report. We'll move on to the finance committee report, and I'll hand it over to Mr. Kaiser.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, the finance committee meeting, we reviewed the Hawkins Ash CPA at mid-aug audit and April seventeenth, twenty eighteen. I kind of like the format a little better, be a sidebar. And I would so move, we accept it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, this evening, we also met on the voucher list of April seventeen. For a grand total of one million, one hundred and three thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars point four. I would so move.
I'll second.
We'll have a little call vote.
Gorman? Yes. Kaiser?
Yes.
Paul Kramer?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
Tom Chek?
Yes.
Ziegler? Yes. Alice?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
DeWiss?
Yes.
All yes.
Okay, as well, on item C, the monthly charter report ending March third first, date of April ninth, twenty eighteen. I would so move that we accept the, we accept the charter.
I'll second that.
Whereas as well, we have a little call vote.
Teal?
Yes.
Tom Chek?
Yes.
Ziegler?
Yes.
Alice?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
DeWiss?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Paul Kramer?
Yes.
All yes.
Mr. President, I approve my finance report.
Move on to item fifteen, which is other reports. Item fifteen A is the Wadbury report for responding to upcoming events.
That would be neat, and we do have, what Ann has up there right now.
Well, we just received notice today that tomorrow is canceled, yeah. Sorry about that, okay.
So, I don't know if anybody was attending, but it would have been. Marathon tomorrow for the new board members together. There also is in the same school news that Diane held up. They are doing a new school board member gathering, have with other members also, and there was a meeting. It would be me seventeenth in Tomahawk, Amy, and I would like to attend that. That's a spring workshop with government, the new experienced school board members. That's just the one, I don't want Diane to be there. There's a workshop, and then there also is in, in the upcoming, there's webinars, if anybody's interested in that, for May and June.
Thank you. Item fifteen B is a CISA nine correspondence and report from the mock meeting.
It's in your, it's in your bag. Keep it short.
Yes, there you go.
Item sixteen is future agenda items. Is there anything for the next meeting?
I've got one. I know I want to be somewhat diligent about reorganization here, but we hear about grants. Could we do a summary report of all the grants we applied for over the last school year, and which ones were granted and approved? And which rules some activity and also funding streams is supported?
I think you also wanted to revisit that zero column.
Kevin, can I ask about the, the policy? We do have in June Steve LeValle coming back with updates, quarterly updates. Could I put your policy there? I'll have Dean look at it right away.
Yeah, that would be fine.
Would that be okay if I, if that all comes together? Okay.
Cory also on the athletic cost per student at the board.
Okay.
Anything else from the board? If you have any future agenda items between now and the time of the next meeting, just let. Item number seventeen is movement into closed executive session. The board will go into closed executive session for swim for section nineteen dot eight-five-one C of the Wisconsin statute for the purpose of promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation of public employees. Section nineteen dot eight-five-one C reads, considering performance evaluation compensation, performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. We'll take a five-minute break here, allow the room to clear, and we will be, come back at quarter two.